Ramen, before we get started.
Everybody, yeah, so David Levitas, Executive Director, LA Forward, really happy to be here today with all of you. Although not, not happy for the cause, but, but happy to be in community with all of you. So LA Forward Action is an organization, a 511C4 organization that's devoted to, that's a community of people working to make Los Angeles a fair and flourishing place for everybody through fighting for policies that, that are going to move us in that direction. And so we're a multi-issue organization and we've worked on housing issues and transportation justice and climate justice. And we've worked on things like campaign finance reform here in LA City and are just really committed to educating people about civic issues, political issues, to mobilizing people to take action, like so many hundreds, thousands of you did with emails and phone calls to elected officials and beyond, and then organizing people, getting people into the, the work of staying engaged beyond these crisis moments, but really staying engaged day in, day out to, to push for change even when it's not in the headlines and it's, it's not as topical. So that's us. Really encourage you to get involved. We have all kinds of in-person meetings, Zoom meetings, whatever, things like this teachings. And you're, you're on our email list now. If you want to stay on our email list, so you'll, you'll keep hearing from us. And, and there's really so much that I think we can accomplish together in this larger ecosystem of LA. I think LA Forward Action can, is really a vehicle for solidarity. And so we look forward to continuing to play that role. So that is a little bit about LA Forward. You know, it's not a surprise that we're, have invited a council member, Ramen, to, to join us tonight and to speak. We were, have been really excited by her leadership in so many different areas and the fresh approach she brought to council. We also know that, you know, she was a subject of, of some of the attacks, both verbal and that we heard in the recordings, and also the, the tax on her district and, and the gerrymandering that happened of her district to undermine her work and undermine her work to support renters and support housing justice and so much else. And we also know that she's been a real thought leader, as they say, someone who's put forward proposals for structural reform in our government to make sure that Angelenos, regardless of who they are, what they look like, really have proper representation. And those proposals haven't really gotten us so much of a hearing yet, but they're starting to right now. And so we're really excited for her to be joining us tonight and just grateful for her presence in this very, very busy, very, very busy week. So thank you, council member. And I'll turn, uh, turn it over to Godfrey.
Yeah, thank you so much, David. And before we go into a lot of the policy reforms that we're going to be talking about for much of this particular conversation, Councilwoman, first, I'm sorry for everything that you're having to sit with right now. And I can only imagine that, you know, we heard an hour and, and you've been in office for quite some time now. And I know this was not the reason you wanted to be in office, to spend your time in this way. Can you just share a little bit about how you are doing today?
Um, well, first of all, hello, everybody. And just the fact that there's 96, 97 people who have signed up to this call and who showed up at 8:15 PM on a Wednesday night. I just want to say thank you all. You give me an incredible amount of hope. The hundreds of people who raised their voice on social media, I, my office got a ton of voicemails and emails. And those people who showed up in council yesterday and today to tell council member Mike Bonin and his son and his husband that we as a city reject everything that was in those tapes, that we are here to stand in solidarity with him and his family. And, um, you know, I'm getting a little emotional just thinking about it. Yeah, I mean, I, I, I put this up. There was a, I don't know if people listened to his, his speech. But he said something that moved me so much. He said, what we heard on those tapes was the worst of us, worst of LA. And what we saw in the council, and it's not just that, what we saw, the outpouring of just unity and rejecting the divisions and the hatred that was in those tapes, that's the best of LA. And I really believe that. And, you know, I think that's, that's really how, um, how I feel like I'm entering this space today. Yeah. And, you know, I can, I can talk more about my specific situation in terms of what was said about my district and my, and what they were trying to do to me through the process of redistricting. And, and you know, to me, that what was said about what they wanted to do to Council District Four during the redistricting process, I think gave the lie to the, you know, I think that was not a, I think conversations around representation around a city that really reflects Los Angeles and the residents of Los Angeles. That is a conversation I so want to have. That is a conversation that Los Angeles deserves to have. Conversations around representation of Latinos, Black Angelenos, of Asian Americans in our elected city leadership and in the governing structures that, that, that are here in this city and in this county. That is a conversation that we must continue to have. What was said about my district and what they wanted to do to me, that they wanted to cut up Koreatown's renters out of my district. That showed me that that was not a good, what we were listening to, in addition to the racism, in addition to the abhorrent language that was huge, the homophobic tropes, all of the stuff that we reject. What was said about my district gave the lie to, to, to that whole conversation. It showed me that that was not a real conversation about, um, about representation. That was a conversation about personal political power and about how you shored up your personal political power. It was not a conversation about Latino political power in Los Angeles. It was a conversation about the political power of those three individuals who were in that room and, and, and running for election. Because what they were talking about was cutting up the power of Latino renters who were in my district and making sure that they didn't have a council member that supported their interests as renters. And so I think for me, I think we're in a very complex and difficult moment right now. But there have been so many moments of real hope and of, of hope and joy and, and, and people coming together. And I, I, you know, I really, I, I think that's what I'm trying to focus on. And, and exactly this conversation that we're having right now, which is how do we ensure that we move out of this moment, not returning to the flawed structures that led us here, but rebuilding structures in ways that move us out of here?
Thank you. Thank you very much, council member. So it's, um, and there's really, I mean, we could spend so much time on any one of these pieces, but I want to move now to talking about, um, you know, thinking as from the structural change, you know, we know that so much of the ugliness that was captured on tape, although certainly the ugliness goes beyond that, but so much of it was in the context of redistricting. And, um, you know, I know you've proposed independent redistricting commission, so others. But before we kind of dive into that, provide some context to everybody about redistricting. So, you know, many of you know this, but I'm just going to explain it very briefly anyway. You know, we have redistricting in, in basically every, whether it's Congress or state legislature, county supervisors, city council, because populations change. And so every 10 years after the census is done, we have to make sure that districts have equal population. And I think, um, you know, in some places that is done with a tremendous amount of gerrymandering and, and politicians running the show, and we've seen that here in LA City. And then we have other models like LA County this most recent cycle or California, where it's been independent, where it has not been drawn, the lines have not been drawn directly by, by politicians. So, you know, I, I don't want to spend too much of your time with me talking, but I would love to hear from you, Councilmember Ramen, you know, what the experience was like from your point of view. And, um, yeah, and, and you know, how you think we should change things going forward based on that experience and, and just based on your own, you know, insights and, and study of the issue.
Um, you know, I think that we, uh, we have in, in, we have in Los Angeles, a really, you know, a non-independent redistricting process. The way that the redistricting process works here in Los Angeles is that council members appoint their own redistricting commissioners. They can remove them at, at will without offering any reasons. The rest of the body doesn't have to approve or disapprove that. They can communicate with those commissioners. That's allowed. All that the commissioner has to do is just to report the content of that communication at the, at, at the beginning of the meeting. And then, once the maps are actually created and put together in, um, in that redistricting commission, they're then sent to the city council for approval. And the council is able to make changes to that map. And in fact, it's permitted to change that map wholesale. And I'm not sure exactly how much was changed after previous redistricting processes. But I know that in this one, the map was changed quite a bit in order to address some of the challenges that, you know, council members had with the districts that were drawn. Um, I don't know, David, if you wanted to talk a little bit about the fact that, you know, the maps that were, I mean, so I think the, the process itself is not set up to be independent in any way. Council members retain full control. And so the kind of conversations that people had on that recording are not surprising. You know, they are a result of the fact that it's not an independent process. What that process, redistricting process is, is a negotiation between different people about, about, about the shape of their districts and how much they're willing to lose and how much they, you know. And, you know, I think I, I also did a lot of fighting for the shape of my district, even though my old district was very strangely shaped and was the process of another flawed redistricting process that had happened 10 years prior. But because it was the district that elected me and because it was a district that I had, had come to know very, very well through my extensive door knocking efforts and, and communications with constituents, I fought to keep the shape of that district because it was my district, because I felt a sense of connection to it, but not because of some of the reasons that we might want to think about when we think about redistricting, which is questions of equity, questions of access, questions of, um, uh, you know, where, uh, how representation happens in a city and other things you might want to consider during a redistricting process. So I think what we had was a system that was designed to produce exactly some of the actions that happened that we overheard on that call. But I think what's clear is that every, everyone who was in, you know, a member of that process is fighting for their own districts and to keep their districts.
Yeah, yeah.
Because of, because of the design of that process.
Totally. So it, it, in, in some ways, you got the worst of both worlds. It seems like you have like the sheen of this impartial district, impartial, not actually impartial, but this commission that isn't the politicians, you know, because, you know, back in the day, they just would have gone in the, in the smoke-filled room and, and did it. Here you had like the appearance of, you know, oh, we're going to have a commission. And yet it, the commission process, it was itself so easily manipulated. And we saw the introduction of map, Mirosterus map at the last minute, K2.5. For those who have followed the process, you remember that infamous map. And it just came out of, came out of nowhere and potentially illegally came out of nowhere. And, um, and then on top of that, the, the ability of council to just like wholesale make these changes. It's like, and, and avoid accountability, at least seemingly until now. So it's, it was a, I think, a terribly designed process, like one that seems like LA, LA City was one of the first cities to have a commission. But it, it was so early in, in the, I think, like the history of the creation of commissions, that it wasn't fully independent. And that, you know, I think has in some ways proved to be the worst of, worst of both worlds. And I think just the broader context too of like, people are fighting for districts, like they want to enhance, they want to make sure. And I think we heard it on the tapes, like they wanted to make sure that, like, they had an easier chance of getting reelected or their allies get, geez, they're trying to get reelected. Or they, you know, it seemed like they had a chance of like, we saw all the fights in, in South LA, CD8 and CD9 of like, who's going to have control over these, control over these economic assets, AKA like access to campaign contributions from people who might want to do business with these entities or what have you. So it's, um, you know, I don't know if you have anything else you want to add there, but it's, it was certainly a deeply, deeply, deeply flawed process.
Yeah. And I think, you know, we, it didn't take that, that recording to show about, show us what was being discussed during the, during the redistricting process. We had that play out in, out in the open, exactly as you said, in the conversation around, around, you know, assets in, in one council district versus another. And, and it was, it was a fight for each council person to retain those assets in their district. And again, I don't think this is how it, it has to be. I think one of the, one of the challenges that I saw in that process and one of the things that I think we can really think about in terms of, um, redistricting is how we select our commissioners. And so putting redistricting in the context of a broader question around trust in, in LA City Hall, right? Or in, in LA City and the government. So who is a commissioner and who is able to serve as a commissioner on those, on that redistricting commission, I think is a very, very important question that we have to think about with a little bit more clarity. Uh, I, there are good models in other places. You know, there are pieces of models of improved and reformed redistricting processes in Long Beach, you know, across California and other states that we can take from as we think about what a, what an independent redistricting process would look like. But one thing might be how are commissioners appointed for that role or selected? Some jurisdictions use what is a, a, a kind of a, an application process and then a random selection process from that application process, right? So you have a pool of applicants, you so, you put in a certain set of criteria to decide what do these commissioners need to have in terms of skills? And then from that body of commissioners, you randomly select a set of qualified commissioners to serve on that body. You also want to think about what is the size of the commission relative to the jurisdiction that they are doing the redistricting for. Do, what is the level of familiarity they might have with those neighborhoods and with the areas that they're supposed to be working on? And I think one of the most important things is what are their conflicts of interest and how do you control for those? Here are some things that I think are really important. I think you have to be, um, you know, you have to have not worked for a local politician within a certain number of years before you're appointed to that position. You should not have been and should not be currently a lobbyist in that jurisdiction. We had registered lobbyists, I believe, serving on our current, on our most recent redistricting commission, who were lobbying for issues that were coming in front of the city. You know, we, I, I think people who have family members who are planning to run for office. And we've seen exactly that, 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 that somebody serves on the commission and then their spouse or their, or their child and ends up running for that seat. No, so no one who's planning to run themselves for those roles, like these are really simple rules that I think you can put in place for commissioner selection that I think is really, really important. Some, we have some rules in place in our commission, not, you know, we don't have none. But I think really thinking about what those conflicts of interest look like and how we weed them out is really, really important in thinking about how we restore trust in a redistricting process going forward.
Yeah. No, thank you for sharing that. That's all really important. I think there was like some of those nitty gritty details. We can talk about independent redistricting commission and we should keep talking about it. And I know you proposed one in council, but the, um, you know, like getting those details right is so important. And I appreciate, appreciate your attention to them. Before we turn to this kind of question of, um, you know, potentially expanding the council, I want to just see if you have any other thoughts on like what you envision an independent commission could look like or, and why, and/or why, you know, why it's, why, what kind of impact do you think it would have?
That's, you know, that's a great question. To me, I think the, one of the most important impacts that it could have is in improving the capacity for, uh, elected representatives to more accurately reflect the interests of their jurisdictions. Right now, we have a system of, of, you know, where basically these lines are drawn to benefit existing political, um, constituencies, which are linked to institutions like the Democratic Party or to, um, you know, particular kind of networks. And I think if you had jurisdictions that were, you know, more independently drawn, that you might be able to generate a new kind of candidate that might be elected in, in that constituent, in, in that redrawn lines, that might be more representative of, of the needs of, of that particular area. And I think to me, that's one of the most powerful ways in which a new redistricting process could change how LA works. That instead of your primary qualifications being for elected office, being connections to, um, you know, existing networks, institutional networks, that your qualifications might more come from what your constituency needed or wanted out of their elected representatives. And I think that, that makes me very hopeful.
Yeah. Well, thank you. That's a really important insight, I think. You know, link, I'm going to turn it over to Godfrey. I think like, but linked to this question of, of redistricting, of independent redistricting is this question of council expansion and, um, in a city, I'll, I'll let Godfrey go. Because I could, I could talk for hours, but I got to, I want to turn it over.
Thanks, David. Absolutely. That was a really great start, Councilwoman Ramen, because I mean, I, I felt the impact of a lot of the redistricting conversations as a renter in Koreatown. Koreatown even, even now has multiple council members that represent just a small area of the city. Because the way that redistricting happened really divided our community. And what that means is when we are divided and we have a common issue across our neighborhood, we have to be able to try to invest three different council members, four council members in our particular, um, uh, agenda or issues that we seek to attend to, which is a lot harder than if we were able to go to one person in particular or made up more of a mass of people. And I think that is where this kind of ties into this idea of city council expansion. Right now, for folks on the call, fun trivia, like I think, you know, if you're on the call at 8:30 PM at night, you probably have some sense of like, oh, our city council is kind of small. It's about 15 seats. That means we have 15 city council districts for the entire city of Los Angeles. And we want to put that in perspective for you. In Chicago, they have 50, their equivalent is called wards, 50 wards. And what that means is they have about 54,000 constituents reporting to a particular, our equivalent of a council member, right? So that council member could engage with about 54,000 folks and feel like, that's all a lot, right? But it, but that, that feels like potentially manageable. New York has about the same amount as Chicago, 51 districts, but New York is larger than us. So for them, 51 districts gets them to about 164,000 people, um, reporting to one particular council member. That, that's a lot. That's a lot still, but it takes 50 different, 51 council members in order to get to this particular ratio. Here's Los Angeles. We have 15 districts and we're somewhere in between New York and, uh, and LA. I'm sorry, New York and Chicago, but with our 15 districts, that gets us to about 250,000 plus or so constituents that, that every, that every council person has to be able to report to. And so, um, Councilwoman Ramen, I just, first I want to ask, like, how have you felt the challenge of this so far? Before we even go to the question of expanding it, what has the challenge been like when you see something to 50,000 people large?
Yeah, I, look, it 260,000, I think, is the size of my district right now. It's, I think it's one of the larger districts now, especially after this most recent redistricting process. It's that green one, um, on that, in that map, that long green one right in the middle. So 260,000 constituents is a lot. And when, and part of it is a, is expectations, right? When people think of city council, they think of someone that, that should show up at their, you know, at their neighborhood meetings, that should show up at every block party that they're having because they're, they're your closest level of government. But because we have so many constituents here in Los Angeles, for me to do that, it requires a huge amount of effort and work to be able to be present for my constituents in the way that I want to be. I, you know, one of the things that I, I want people to feel the presence of the city in their lives and the city government in their lives. When I was knocking on doors during my race, when I knocked on a door, people would often say, I have no idea who my city council is. I didn't even know I had a city council person. They had no idea what their name was. They had no idea what a state council did. And so a lot of what I did when I was knocking on doors was really civic education. And that worked to get people more engaged. We, even though we did change the timings of our election, voter turnout in our race increased way more than other city council races that were happening at the same time. In fact, it increased by five times in our race, which was incredible, you know. But the, but to continue that kind of engagement, to show everyone who I talked to during that race, that, hey, this isn't going to be the last time you hear from me. You're going to see me again before the next, before the next time I have to run for this office. That takes an incredible amount of work. And so I think just the size of that district and the size of these districts is, is really, really enormous. But I do, and I'm sure you'll get to this, I don't think increasing the size, the number of council districts alone is, a lot of people talk about this. They want to make it double, the double the size of the council. And I am supportive of it. I do think more council members is a good idea. But I do think that increasing the size of the council has to happen in partnership with other reforms that will make sure that some of the flaws with our existing governance are not replicated, except with even more council members in place. And I think in order to understand what those governance reforms are, I think we have to understand why our low, our city government looks different from Chicago or New York. And it's because West Coast cities in particular, but Los Angeles especially, we were created in opposition to the corruption of the East Coast city government political machines. You know, they were incredibly corrupt. Their mayors were very corrupt. They had a lot of power in, you know, in, in, in a mayoral office. And so our city council and our board of supervisors, our county versus city government and all of the different unincorporated governments that exist, all of those are meant to be decentralized. They were decentralized in opposition to the corruption that existed on the East Coast and created and kind of really designed to be as decentralized as possible. So a city council here, we have a weak, a lot of people call it a weak mayor, strong council system. And we have a, a much, you know, we have these 15 council members, but they have much more power vested in them than the council members, say, in Boston or New York or Chicago. Because it was really set up to have no single nexus of power.
And here we are, though, having this conversation with, with tapes that were leaked that showed clearly that there was a lot of influence now filtering into the 15 people who have, who have power right now. I might, we, we definitely are going to, what you alluded to in terms of what are the other checks and balances we will need if we're going to expand the number of city council districts. But before we get to that in particular, we're going to talk about campaign finance reform because big money can always influence anybody who runs, no matter how small or how many districts you have. Can you give us any sort of idea about how you see, um, how you see this playing out with the idea of pushing like a redistricting commission through potentially? Because it feels like, it feels really hard to juggle both at the same time. Like if we are thinking about independent redistricting commission or whatnot, and then we're expanding these, drawing new lines. Like how, can you tell us a little bit on how that would play out?
How would any of this play out at the, you mean, how would these reforms get pushed through? Okay. And I think the question you've, you haven't asked is why haven't more of these reforms been pushed through?
Sure. Yeah, yeah.
So, so in this weak mayor, strong council system, a huge amount of legislative power sits with the council here in, in the city of Los Angeles. And the way in which our council is structured is that there's council committees that have control over particular issues, which are, which are chaired by one member of the city council. And then you have the council president. These committee chairs and the council president set the agendas for all of those meetings. And so if you want, so, you know, I, I think of myself in some ways as a, um, as a, I try to be at least, um, strategic in all of this, right? We don't introduce a motion. We don't, we try not to do motions where we're just trying to get a headline out of it. That I, I try to, some, you know, I have done that in the past, but I would say we try not to just introduce a motion. We want to introduce a motion that has legs. So what does it mean for a motion to have legs? That means you have So what does it mean for a motion to have legs? That means you have worked with the chair of that, that committee, um, gotten their input on it, um, and made it in, made that motion into something that will go through that committee. Right? That, that will get agendized and that will make it through that committee because that's the first hurdle. And that you've also worked with the council president's office to make sure that that is something that they are excited about as well, because you need to have it agendized in the full council, right? So that's not, that's not always the formula you need to follow. Sometimes there's ideas that have immense public um, power that are just going to go through no matter what. Sometimes things are so small, they're kind of no brainers and they'll just get through. Sometimes it's just persistence. You call the committee chair enough times, you call their staff enough times and okay, finally they will agendize it. And it does make it through the process. But one of the reasons why you haven't seen some of these changes, like the lobbying reforms that the Ethics Commission has now put forward to council three times in the last few years, why those have never moved their, made their way through council is because they've never been agendized in the Rules Committee. Um, and that's it, you know, so, so you know, you're talking about how do we push this change through? I think as outsiders thinking about how to think about strategy in, in, in City Hall, if there's a particular agenda item that you want to push through, whether it be related to govern, governance reforms, um, or whether it be related to another issue that you're passionate about, one of the people you need to be doing your advocacy with is the chair of that relevant committee. Um, and with the council president's office, whoever that person will be going forward, right? Um, and without that advocacy work either happening inside the building or outside the building, it's very, very unlikely that change is going to happen.
And all of this is like organizing strategy that you're giving us, right? Like, like if these are things we are passionate about and the effect of which we are wanting to see, building relationships or even having the names of folks, being on their radar, on their calendars is something that we will really need to strive to do in the coming weeks and months to support any, anyone's motions that we, we believe um, have merit.
Yeah, and Brad, somebody in the chat asked who chairs the Rules Committee uh, till today, it was um, Neri Martinez.
Yeah. Um, let's move on. We have, we have like eighteen minutes left.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I feel like I'm talking so much.
No, 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 that's the point.
That's the reason.
We, we, um,
Yeah, just one last thing I wanted to say um, is about counting votes, okay? So even if the chair of the committee is supportive of something, it's very unlikely that they're going to want to push something through to full council that doesn't, that they can't count to eight on. Right? And that, or that they, that they don't feel like they can comfortably get to eight. So that just as you're thinking about strategy around issues, count though, you always got to be counting to eight. So if you want to build support behind a particular policy, um, go to that committee chair, go to the council president and figure out how to count to eight. And that's, that's how you get policies through. And if we have, like, for example, if there are things I have not introduced yet that I talked about, you know, on the campaign trail that I'm excited about, one is just a question of capacity. I'm on five committees. I serve on AQMD, which the mayor appointed me to. I do a lot of community engagement and I'm out in, you know, out, out in the field a lot. So some of it is capacity. I don't have the capacity to take on everything I want to, but also some of it is just, is that I can't count to eight. So, um, so I just, you know, I, I want to say that we, you know, we, we can do more together if we can all learn how to count to eight together.
Yeah, eight for right now with fifteen people.
Yeah, that's right.
We'll see where that goes. And I just want to, you know, point out, we're in the middle of election season. So like the eight will change. Like, uh, you know, uh, potentially as we, as we move forward. So like the eight will change. Not only will the eight change, um, but um, uh, you know, I, I think then potentially it's like committees change over um, and things like that. So like constantly having to keep track of who is being appointed where is something that we will want to do as LA forward and as an organizing community over the next few months as new folks get installed. Um, David, I'm going to pass things back to you to um, take us to that conversation about campaign finance reform that um, Councilwoman Ramin started talking about.
Yeah, yeah. And before I get there, I just, you know, I want to highlight one of the, the things, just like, give a little context. I mean, so technically, we'll, we'll go more in depth in this, but like, you know, any of this change, many of these changes will require a charter reform, you know, of, an amendment, you know, like the city charter is like, is like the city's constitution and there's certain things you, you can't just pass through legislation. So something like expanding the size of council or changing, we do redistricting, will have to be a charter reform amendment. It will have to go before the voters in twenty twenty-four or another time. So I think there's going to be a lot of organizing work that certainly will need to be done to that. And then to, I think Godfrey's earlier question, you know, there's this, like, I think there's a lot of power in linking independent redistricting with um, council expansion because even if the, the, the dependent redistricting is present, like, the city is so big that it's like hard to imagine, like, like even the best intentioned people drawing these districts, like, how do you, like, you know, council member Bonner's district is not particularly gerrymandered. And it's still, I live in it. It's a massive, it goes all the way from Westchester to the Palisades, Venice, and it's, it's just huge. Um, so it is, I think a lot of these pieces kind of fit together. And, and that leads me to my, my next question, which is really around um, campaign finance reform. Um, LA Ford was very active, um, part of the coalition along with Unreg La and um, and uh, Common Cause, League Women Voters that uh, worked with council member Bonner and worked with Mike to uh, to pass this uh, grassroots matching funds. So there was six to one campaign financing, which helped a lot of people uh, win their elections and hopefully will help a lot more people win.
It was, it was transformative.
Yeah.
I could tell you, matching funds, like campaign finance reforms, we can definitely talk about that. We can talk about things like democracy vouchers. What can we do with the limitations that the um, that the Supreme Court has set on us?
Yeah.
But those matching funds, holy crap, you guys did good.
Yeah.
Um, and it, you know, that, that was, that, that's a huge achievement that I think we should all be proud of here in the city of LA.
Well, well, thank you. And we're, we're so excited for the results um, with your election and Aunice Fernandez's election and hopefully many others to come. Um, and I think we saw that that happened because of a scandal, like, you know, it was bottled up, you know, uh, the coalition was working and, and, and Mike Bonner was working hard and it just wasn't going anywhere. And then, you know, we had some indictments. I think it was the Lisa thing or of England or I don't remember which one of the many corrupt council officials, uh, you know, it got in the news and all of a sudden it, it picked up momentum. And so I think we may be at a similar moment right now. Um, and I'm curious, you know, what you're, you know, what you're excited about when it comes uh, to campaign finance reform. Um, I know we, we kind of co-hosted an event that you participated in around democracy vouchers. Um, whether it's democracy vouchers or anything else, I'm curious, curious what you're excited about when it comes to campaign finance reform.
So, yeah.
Grassroots candidates.
Well, so I am really excited about democracy vouchers. Um, and the, we know, I think there's some questions in the chat about what they are. Um, I can talk about how they've been used in uh, this is a reform that's been now um, employed in Seattle. Um, and how it works is that instead of each person um, in LA donating to a candidate, uh, you would get a, a voucher in Seattle. I think each resident gets four vouchers um, that are worth twenty-five dollars each and they get to donate to any city candidates that they want. Um, and that I think enables a lot more people to participate in local politics in terms of do, donations than um, than ever before. And I, I want to just talk a little bit about my personal experience of why this is important. Um, I think one of the things that we do here in Los Angeles i, as candidates is that you have to go out and raise a lot of money, right? Um, and that's tied into some of the other governance reforms that you need to have in order to get a better system here in Los Angeles. When you have a council district, when you have a council member, and when you have a city, that's one of its major powers is land use, the power over land use, the power to negotiate over what gets built and what doesn't get built. That's one of the biggest powers that our city council has right now. And there's a huge amount of discretion given to individual city council members to negotiate with developers on existing projects, to extract concessions from those developers in the form of community benefits and payments into trust funds. Um, I think that, and, and by the way, and this setup where city council members have a huge amount of discretion over land use is is kind of made all the more um, powerful by the fact that our community planning process has been so broken. We have not updated our community plans across most of the city for many, many decades, right? Hollywood Community Plan, for example, it was written a decade ago, thrown out via court case. It's been rewritten again. Um, it's, it's long, long overdue. Hollywood is the heart of so much expansion of construction, of new development. So that means that every single development that's coming in there is a variation, a um, uh, you know, it has to be given a variance from the existing plan, right? So now, if you're in a system where you have to raise dollars for your race, you have the power to grant variances for people to build things in your district. Who are you going to give those variances to? The people who are going to donate right back into your campaign, right? That's the system that we have set up here by not updating our community plans and by create, relying on this particular system of campaign finance. And I think that's why looking at alternatives like matching fund programs, which really magnify and empower the power of a single dollar from a resident who is not connected to profiting off of the city is so important. And that's why a democracy voucher program would further underscore the power of individual residents to be able to power candidates that they're excited about rather than empowering candidates who can give out the most favors in their district and reap the most campaign finance dollars, right? So I think it's just important for people to understand why the campaign finance question is so potent here in Los Angeles because of our context around land use and what some of the biggest powers of a city council person are. Um, and to me, I'm an urban planner by training, so obviously I'm kind of obsessed with land use, but you know, I think it's at the root of so much in LA. It's that the root of why we have, you know, crazy housing costs. We've underbuilt for decades here. We don't have enough housing. We have a rising homelessness crisis, like why all, we have, we're one of the most segregated cities in America. All of this is connected to land use and the power over land use by city council. Um, and this is not a new situation. A hundred years ago, when the first zoning plan in the city of Los Angeles was put into place, the, one of the first things that started happening was that council members were given money to create variances. And this process of creating variances was aided embedded by the LA Times, which was at that point run by a real estate baron. So this is so deeply rooted. It is, it is, I think, like, people talk about all kinds of things in terms of reform in Los Angeles. To me, land use and questions around land use reform are absolutely central to thinking about how we make this into a fairer, better, working and more functional city.
Yeah, no, that's, thank you. Thank you for sharing that. I think it's um, they're like, that, it, I, I remember being, I moved here seventeen years ago. I've lived here my whole adult life, but I remember being struck here, struck by the um, just like how much the council's offices are fiefdoms. You know, it's like, like so much goes through a council office in terms of landing. It just seems like this is no way to organize a deeply complicated but deeply intertwined city. Um, you know, this, you have this, this project and this, on this block and one block over, it's a whole, whole different council office you have to deal with. And it, it just seems like we have the worst of both worlds. Um, you know, developers actually complain about things being difficult here and the flip side, we don't have like, it's because we have this crazy system where you don't actually have a set of rules. We should pass a set of rules and people have to follow it. And then like, you don't bribe your way into um, into compliance or into profits like we saw with, you know, council member Hesar. It's like, that's literally what happened. Um, and it, it's just so endemic. Um,
Right. And then the, I, I also just want to say that in addition to that, I think the democracy voucher program, this idea of giving each person twenty-five dollars to donate, you end up having um, the most diverse set of donors ever. Uh, more young people being able to participate in local politics by giving away dollars. You had a range of incomes participating in local politics by being able to give away these dollars. So I think, you know, there's all kinds of, um, all kinds of ways in which a democracy voucher program can really transform how we think about who participates in local politics. And Dominic, I see that you're asking some questions about um, leadership in city council. To be very, very honest with you, um, I'm not trying to ignore you. It's just, I have not, I, th, this has been a moment of the present for me and we are now thinking about next steps and I have not thought about, I have not thought about those next steps. So, but, but thank you for, for your faith in, in, in my ability to to be in a leadership role in the council. I appreciate that very much.
Yeah. Um, yes, we have, we have faith in you. Um, and, and so the, I guess my other comment I was going to make was just around like democracy vouchers. One of the reasons I think it can be so powerful is like with matching funds, you, you can go to someone and get twenty dollars, but they still have to be able to afford to give twenty dollars. And I know as someone who's done fundraising for some of the progressive candidates, the cycle for Ugo and Aunice and um, uh, Aaron Darling and many of the others, it's just like, well, you still got to ask people who have spare cash on hand. And uh, you know, you know, trying to get people who can give a hundred fourteen, one hundred and fourteen dollars, you know, the, the maximum that can be matched for council get, like, that's a lot of money for a lot of people in a, in a city like ours. So um, I think democracy vouchers could be huge. It, it seems to me like there's a tremendous amount of momentum right now. Um, and we could have, um, you know, we could, we could hopefully with new and better council leadership and a lot of great uh, new people hopefully being elected in the, in, in, in November. Um, we can see some things moving forward and uh, coalescing into, you know, we can see the council um, working to create a, a package of really structural reforms. And then I imagine that would then get put onto a, a charter amendment, either one or multiple charter amendments that would go on the ballot in twenty twenty-four and and we could potentially see some real changes within the next two years of, of doing things like, things like independent redistricting, council expansion, democracy voucher. So I don't know if you have any thoughts about timeline or how you see that process playing out, but.
Yeah, so we, you know, we and I introduced this amendment to um, after our really broken redistricting process. I introduced an amendment, oh, sorry, a motion, not an amendment, a motion to um, put together a, I'm looking at the motion right now, um, to create an, in, to, to basically to, to ask the CLA, which is the chief legislative analyst in the city, to come back with options to place on the ballot um, for an independent redistricting commission for the city of Los Angeles. The motion was um, asked for this to be placed on the November twenty twenty-two ballot, um, but was held up um, in council, uh, was never heard at the Rules Committee until very recently. And in I, and one of the richest ironies that hasn't been remarked upon yet was actually placed on the council agenda um, for, it was supposed to be heard today. We didn't end up having counsel today, but um, and that, the council agenda was set long before, you know, any of the news broke of, of any of this by the council president. So um, and this, so I think there are things like independent redistricting that this, this, this motion asks the city to put that on the ballot at the next available ballot, whenever it makes sense through this process. It asks the chief legislative analyst to go through all of these different potential options for how we change our redistricting process to make it fairer, um, more just, more representative, more um, easy for people to participate in, and then come back to the council with an option, and then that option would be placed on the ballot. So the council has the capacity to put those things on the ballot. Res, if, if we don't, for some reason we don't do that, although I can't imagine that we wouldn't. Um, residents can also put together a ballot measure themselves and gather signatures as we've seen for a few successful things that have been placed on the ballot, um, that they can, residents can do that themselves, but those are often, that's often an expensive proposition. And so something like council expansion, um, which would also require a charter amendment, um, I think it would be hard, uh, but not impossible um, to, I, you know, find a, a momentum to do that as residents, but we are actually going to be considering that at the city as well. The one that final thing I just wanted to say is that yesterday I also introduced a motion and I hope it moves forward. It really depends on what the council looks like um, over these next few days um, and, and weeks to create an ad hoc committee on governance reform, where a lot of these issues that are connected, but not all the same. So everything from uh, land use reform, uh, discretionary, you know, kind of council aldermanic approval of land use, that, that, that question can be addressed where we can look at campaign finance reform. Can we, where we can look at the lobbying, um, the lobbying uh, recommendations that the Ethics Commission has now made three times and been ignored on. That can be there, um, and where things like the independent redistricting um, process and uh, council expansion can be heard and move on. Because for me, in my mind, I thought we need something, we need something that can put the focus on restoring trust at city council. Uh, and to me, I thought this kind of an ad hoc committee would be really useful, given the fact that we've had three. Uh, and to me, I thought this kind of an ad hoc committee would be really useful, given the fact that we've had three FBI indictments. The fact that we've had this this crisis in in the redistricting process. Um, the fact that we have overall a loss of trust in local government, I mean, even outside of this, I think a lot of people don't have faith in our local government anymore. I I see as one of the most important parts of my job to go out there and and increase that trust. Um, and increase that faith, that local government can get things done. But we don't have that, that's in short supply right now, so I think, I think it would be a good moment to do it. We'll see if that moves forward, I'm certainly going to be pushing for it from the inside. Love for people to be pushing for it from the outside. Um, but speaking to your question earlier. David, I think there's a set of things that we can do, some of which will require charter amendments and some of which will just require it to move through council and make those changes. Like lobbying reforms, like um even some of the um campaign finance stuff.
Yeah, no, that, I appreciate that, so it sounds like, you know, there's a lot of work to be done to get council to. Um, put the right thing, pass the right thing, both as legislation and as potential charter amendment, and then there's a lot of work uh to be done by us on the outside to um. You know, get, we get something charter amendment or amendments on the ballot in twenty twenty four, a lot of organizing work to be done to lay the groundwork. Because winning those campaigns are, is not cheap. Um, I'm curious, the last question really is, um, and one, just want to thank you so much for for your time in this very, very busy. Chaotic week, um, and for for all the work you're doing to kind of um improve our government and and make it more fair and equitable. Um, any, any calls to action you have for us, uh, Godfrey's going to wrap us up, but before we go to him, I want to see if, yeah, any other calls to action you have for us or any other last thoughts?
Um, you're already acting, it's so exciting, it's really, really exciting. Uh, I don't have a call to action beyond just. You know, I I'm, I I'm a proud progressive that was elected um to Los Angeles City Council. But my call to action, the thing that gets me out of bed every day is to show that. A progressive city is also a highly functional city, that it works. That it gets things done better, that we can solve homelessness and do it by centering the dignity of people who are experiencing homelessness. That we can build more housing, but we can also keep people who are in their existing housing in that housing. And I think we can do it all, so my call to action would just be, I know this is a time of real anger and pain, real pain. Disappointment um for so many here in LA. I think we are, I, you know, I'm here and I would, I want all of us to be here to to make it work, let's make this work. Um, and and to show that we can build a city that's really built on progressive principles and it can be the most beautiful city. Um, and I I already think it's the most beautiful city and I think it it can get so much better.
Thank you so much, uh, council member and uh, Godfrey, we have a bunch of calls to action ourselves and wrap up, so, Godfrey, take it, take it away.
We sure do, um, and I I just want to recognize again, thank you so much, um, Councilman Ron for for joining us. We're in a season of lots of platitudes because it's election season. And then we saw on Sunday, the leaked audio really showed us just like what happens when people only zone in on power and their own power. Um, and here, how refreshing to actually think, hear someone who thinks about policy obsessively in such a nerdy way. And you could see that you actually like lit up when you started to talk about land use, like, we deserve to have. Folks who are not just relational and willing to share this information with the public, but actually are just are nerdy. Um, at at the same time about it, so thank you for sharing all that information and. Um, we, uh, you know, LA Forward is a group that organizes Angelenos uh toward a more progressive. Um, uh, affair, a flourishing more uh community, um, and so we're grateful for the information so that we can act accordingly and pay attention accordingly. Um, over the next few weeks and months. Um, just to wrap up again, I shared that it's election season, check to see if your mail-in ballots have arrived. I have been checking my mailbox obsessively, it hadn't come as of yesterday, yes, I'm gonna keep paying attention. Um, so it comes, um, Councilman Ramon referenced that there are um regular residents who can actually work really hard, get signatures to put a particular. A measure on the ballot for voters to vote on, and we have one right in front of us called Measure ULA. Um, that we at LA Forward have been walking for every single weekend uh between now and the election, here's where we're going to be. This weekend in Venice, working with Venice Community Housing, next weekend, Safe Place for Youth, uh, with DSA, uh, with Grassroots Neighbors. Um, so we're working with lots of different organizations um to make sure that we can win ULA. What ULA is, it allows us to create the largest ever fund for affordable housing and tenant protections, homelessness prevention. For Los Angeles, which does never exist on this year by year um level, almost a billion dollars to be able to close the gap between the number of affordable housing units. That we have and the number that we need to have in order to make sure we put a plug into homelessness. So walk with us, laforward.org slash ULA, you don't need, you don't need any experience. Um, at all, last week, two thirds of our volunteers had never talked with voters before at the door, that's our favorite type of person um to work with. Um, we also have a voter guide coming out, um, it's a really lonely process to fill out your your voter guide, to do lots of research at your computers and not really know what something means. To see lots of pros and cons and not be able to talk with someone about it. So we've got a voter guide out, we've got endorsements out, if you go to that website that you see at the top. But if you want to do this in community, we're having a ballot filling party um at All Season Brewing um on La Brea. Um, on uh La Brea and Wilshire, I think ish, it's on. Um, and that's on the twenty sixth, that'll be around six PM or so, grab a beer, grab some tacos, bring your ballots with you. Um, and and do it in community, you do not have to be um lonely and 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 lost in filling out your ballot. Those are the big calls to action that we have, but of course, we're going to be paying attention to what's happening at City Hall over the next um few days or so. Um, Councilman Ramon mentioned a number of motions that may be up for um for conversation, should the city council meeting happen, depending on what happens with resignations. Et cetera, and um we are a place at LA Forward that supports the advocacy of Angelenos toward particular motions that come forth as Councilman Ron and talked about. So we can help you stay involved, we can help you understand what's happening, we can help point you in the direction of your advocacy. If you're not yet a member, um, you can go to laforward.org slash sustain. Um, right now, we have a very small staff that is able to organize thirteen thousand folks on our mailing list and we would love to be able to do much, much more, not just in election season, but after it. On and on the road to twenty twenty four and beyond, um, so if you are able to become a a a monthly donor of ours, go to laforward.org slash sustain, literally a dollar a month helps us out. Right, um, and in.
And I'll just say, I mean, like, the reason we're able to do stuff and like take on the political establishment and not care what. Neri Martinez or Ron Herrera is going to do is because we get funded by regular people, right? Like, that's basically the majority of our C four funding that does political work is coming from like regular people who are giving. A dollar a month, ten dollars a month, a hundred dollars a month, whatever they can afford, and it's, it is incredibly, incredibly powerful. It also, by becoming a monthly uh member, you get to uh be part of our endorsement process. So um, it is um really, really encourage you, if you've thought about signing up before, haven't done it, um, just take the leap, do it. Um, we'll be incredibly grateful, even if it's a dollar or two a month, it is so, so important.
Thank you so much, David. All right, we are way past time, I know Councilman Ramon has kids back outside of her, she's in like a a garage office or something. So want to let you get back to your family, get some sleep before, who knows what tomorrow will bring. Um, thank you all so much for um for joining us, it is really tough times, but know that we've got um someone who is allied and thinking about ensuring that LA is. Is a place where we can actually have voice in halls of power um here with us allied, so thank you so much, Councilwoman Ramon. For joining us, thank you all um for joining us as well, stay in touch. Um, and uh, we'll post this recording or share it or something uh for folks, if you have friends who missed it, um, it's not getting to the room. Thank you, have a good one.
Thank you, everybody.